Yeah, I guess.
Either somebody's in a heap of trouble or some there's people here that's glad that somebody's leaving. I'm not sure what generates the crowd. But look, Freddy's not the one leaving. Y'all go back to work and celebrate. He ruined it a time or two, but he's not going. And but before we actually get started into that, I want to chastise whoever uh whoever coached Jenny into retirement. That's not just something you walk up to and say, I'm gonna retire on. And you're already retired, so it ain't nothing new. Is there an existing employee that coached her?
I need a shot of that.
If there's an existing employee, uh your leave and all that's been canceled for the course of the future. But if it's somebody out who retired, there's nothing with it. Uh having said that, um I've worked with Jenny for a long time in different capacities over the years. And she's still so young. I don't understand how she's maintained that. Because look at this. You think, well, look how young he is. She's growing exponentially. You think you could grow it over a few years, tires, they could tell you.
You're really gonna be.
You don't know.
But now we are, we are here first of all to uh to celebrate that Jenny Conyers is going to retire. Did I say that correctly? Conyers. Conyers.
Conyers.
See, bam or bump, I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's true.
Bam.
Bam.
Tomato, tomato.
That's what's great.
Bam, Jim. It's a sad time and it's a happy time. And uh it I don't think the sheriff can even find a happy time on it. Uh he's he's losing uh kind of the right-hand person and he's talked to all of us about that. We 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 do this process, I think just about everybody that comes in and wants to have some sort of a send-off. And what makes me happy is we've actually gone through times where we didn't have employees that didn't, they didn't want this. They just want to go home. They're disgusted. We had it when I was a gang member. I don't want a part. I'm going to my house. Leave me alone. And and what I'm happy about is I don't love any of the retirees since I, you know, spent the last several years that they're not happy to be a county employee and that are not uh that want to celebrate with their fellow workers when they leave. And that that shows that we're we're working pretty close as a family. And leaving that family is gonna be uh and what we say to everybody that does that, those just like any family, you you get to come back in the family. We'll have a family reunion every once in a while. And uh you call them a Christmas gift together or something like that, but we'll have that. And you get to come back and and tell us how proud we are for still working. But having said all of that, we'll celebrate with you and uh and we lift you up in the service you've given to us. And we have prepared this this beautifully worded resolution. Who wrote this? Okay, okay, okay. One of the sheriff's people wrote this. And it is it's serious, though. It's not like some of them could have done. It has a few dramatic layers in it, but uh we straightened those out with Word chip or something, didn't we? This says Saint Clair County Commission Resolution Twenty Twenty Four Days Sixty Five Honoring Jenny Conyers On Her Retirement. Whereas Jenny Conyers began her career with Saint Clair County Sheriff's Office August the fourth nineteen ninety-four as a dispatcher and advanced through the years to her current position as Chief Plurk in the Saint Clair County Sheriff's Office. Whereas Jenny Conyers, Chief Plurk with the Saint Clair County Sheriff's Office, will retire after thirty years of outstanding and dedicated service to the citizens of Saint Clair County, Alabama. And whereas throughout Jenny uh Jenny's career, she has served the citizens of Saint Clair County with fairness and dedication. Whereas in addition, Jenny is a wife to Cabot Conyers. Do you call him Cabot? You got other words? You got other words for us? We could have put those in here. She's a mother to Carson uh Cornutt and Cody Conyers and grandmother to Hudson Cornutt. And whereas we would like to congratulate Jenny on her retirement October the first twenty-four with our sincere and grateful appreciation for a job well done. Therefore, may it resolve in recognition of her many years of tireless dedication, service, professionalism, and commitment to Saint Clair County Sheriff's Office and to Saint Clair County Commission, Saint Clair County Commission and the Sheriff's Office does hereby bestow gratitude and public recognition to Jenny Conyers and offers best wishes for continued happiness and success in retirement. In witness thereof, Mr. Jeff Brown, Ricky Parker, Tommy Bowers, and Bob Mize, and Saint Clair County Sheriff Billy Murray have caused this resolution to be executed on their behalf by standing the chairman of the Saint Clair County Commission on this tenth day of September twenty twenty-four. And at this point in time, I officially call the County Commission meeting to order, and I entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Have a motion to have a second. Okay, we got two people that want you to leave. Having said that, there's any discussion. Any commissioners gain comments they want to make at this point in time for the official record?
She's not leaving.
Well, she's staying.
A few days a week.
Well, we aren't gonna say that because.
Shane, come back.
Thank you.
I know both her mother and daddy well. We were great friends with her family and her family. And I have them for quite some time now. So I and I appreciate she comes from good stock. I appreciate you. I appreciate your friendship and years.
I'm not putting the commissions on the spot because I gotta say something nice. Jeff?
I thought I'm gonna let Ricky talk, but you can't replace it is. I mean, you can't replace it. She's been around and done a great job.
And I said, like I said a while ago, you're retiring, but you're not retiring. So we're gonna keep you around a few days. It's maybe two or three days. We we let you have a few days off every now.
Call that a soft landing. Go for a soft landing. Sheriff, do you hear this official process?
Yes, sir. If you don't mind, Chairman, I'd love to say a word. I know that shocks you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, and you too, Ricky. Thank y'all. We always jab each other with Stevens. Thirty years, that is quite an accomplishment, Jenny. And just to show you that when I first started, Jenny was the voice on the radio at dispatch on the other end. So our shift used to say, man, that dispatcher's really good. We need to get her every shift. But what I didn't realize, this is before I'd actually met her, Jenny and the girls on the other end were saying, man, we don't want to work that shift. They are horrible. This is the zoo crew. So that's how we started. And then when she transitioned to the administrative side, I certainly had the pleasure to work with her uh on some very difficult stuff for many years. And we worked together so well, Cabot, you'll forgive me, but uh one of our new dispatchers, we're celebrating the anniversary of dispatch. Many of you were there, and I was running late, and Jenny called me and said, they want you to say a few words, and we're gonna be setting back in EMA, and then after that, we've got a thing upstairs, and they've got some food here. So she was setting everything up. Uh he'll probably want to sit here. He doesn't want to eat that. He'll probably drink this. So one of the dispatchers came to me a month later and said, I thought you and Jenny were married. So I said, why? Said, well, I mean, she knows everything about you. I was usually handling everything. Well, I said, well, that's, she's been my work wife for a long time, Jenny, and I thank you for that. Cabot, I'm sorry. Now she's yours. You have it now. I know. That Cabot, everybody, he's gonna need all of that. But here's the thing, Chairman, I'll say you and I have discussed this. The thing that's always set Jenny apart is she never runs from a challenge. And I told her the day after I was elected, I said, Jenny, we have our hands full. We're gonna go from a dump truck broke down on the side of the road to a well-oiled machine, and the commissioner's gonna help us. And she pulled out a file and said, I'm ready to go. And really difficult data sharing, processing, information networks. Jenny's a brainchild. They set all that up. Could not have done it without it. Well, I I mean, I probably could, but I mean, it was really difficult. It was really difficult, but I was so relieved knowing that I had Jenny. They are ready to go. And anything, when we switched over from Nextel to phones, Jenny, my goodness, she was the only one that knew how to turn a phone on. So I look back at all that stuff and think, man, every step of the way, if we hadn't had you, Jenny, we'd been in a mess. And I want to thank you for that. Her son Cody, my daughter Brooklyn, this ages me a little bit, but uh we taught him in T-Ball. And that's the thing Brooke has always said about Cody. Cody was always good to me and nice to me, and I said, well, his mother's the same way with me, always. So she told me a long time ago, I have your back, and you always have. And I appreciate that, Jenny. I appreciate your friendship, and certainly your family has been very close to ours. So kinda in closing, I'll say this, thirty years, she's worked for four sheriffs. She did tell me privately that I was her favorite, so. That's quite an accomplishment. And with that time, Jenny, I'll please.
That's what you said.
Yes. I brought them for Jenny, but also brought them, you know, to the incident in Lyles County, just in case. But I will say this, with four sheriffs in thirty years, that's an amazing accomplishment. And Freddie, I'm sorry, John Kitchens is now our senior employee. But you think of that, she had two and a half, almost three years on our next most senior employee. So that kind of fortitude has been very tough to to do, but thank you, Jenny. You've served the county well. And I'll just end this by saying, certainly, you're always part of our sheriff's office family. And as you go and transition to other things, you'll become part of other families too. So thank you, Jenny. I appreciate it.
Next transition is she's coming to a bad place.
Just him. We put this president and not voting.
Oh, yeah. Hey, can you tell us all your secrets?
Now, we got, do we have anybody else in here that wants to share uh some comments either for or against Jenny? I tell you what, let's do this. If anybody in here has anything that they'd like to say is good about Jenny, just raise your right hand. That that'll be possible. If there's anybody here that has anything bad to say about Jenny, raise her right. And don't get too excited about that standing ovation. I got one both times I was defeated. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we're in discussion. Any other discussion? No further discussion? All favor the motion, let the number say an aye. Oppose, no. You're officially now declared retired from this, but kind of not retired, if that makes sense. And we thank you so much. Picture, but you want to say something before the pictures or?
Speech.
Speech, speech.
Well, not really a speech, but uh thirty years, wow. I mean, I blinked and it was gone. So time, it really does fly when you're having fun. So to all these young people coming in, don't blink. You'll be here before you know it. Oh, I see some folks back there. I didn't know they had. I love all y'all, and I will truly miss you, but I'm not gonna be that far away.
All right. Pictures now. Come in, come in, yeah.
All our sheriff's office family, if you would come up, and with our commission family. Thank you, Jim. The sheriff present her her resolution.
Oh, great.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, Commissioner Parker wants a picture by itself.
So I really would like a picture with my chairman and my commission.
All right. All of the commission staff. She wants a photograph of all the commission staff.
Jennifer. Lakefield.
Commission staff.
All y'all.
All right. Okay, at this time, I will recess and meet you. And we'll have a word of prayer. So if y'all bow with me, we'll have a word of prayer. Ask God to bless you, receive you, believe you. Your God will come before you again, dear Lord, just humble and thankful for your lessons. And thankful for your encouragement that we obtained wisdom. And also, dear God, that we are not only encouraged by you, we are required by you to apply that wisdom in the in the most holy way that we possibly can. Uh God, we use you as the guide to our life, and we know if we do that, that we do the right things, dear Lord. In this meeting, dear Lord, we know we're assigned by you to serve. That's what your word says, and so we're proud of that assignment. We take it seriously, and we take it collectively, dear Lord, as a as a body. God, we lift the lives of our families and our friends up to you, our staff, our our people that work for Saint Clair County, dear God, that this, it's just a wonderful family you've put us in. We ask you to watch over all of them and their health. And uh that's their mental health, their physical health, their financial health, and all the ways, dear Lord, that we put our trust in you to provide for us. We ask all these things in Jesus's name again. And we ask. Our beliefs and prayers. By the way, just saying, call me the Lord.
Praise the Lord. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you so much. This is a bittersweet situation. Commissioners, our children grow up. They just grow up. They have a life of their own, and they leave. We've got some stuff to let some of that do as well, so. Uh having called the meeting to order, you'll see the agenda in front of you. I would say most approve the agenda. A motion of a second. Properly moving second. Any discussion on that agenda? Additions or deletions? A discussion on favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Next item is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August the twenty-seventh. Have a motion to approve? Properly moved in second. Any discussion? Uh as we've discussed this week, and as we're wrestling with the uh putting out the information that the county uh has and is required to have, we point out from the way of discussion that we are aware that th- these minutes will now become official, but they won't become final. This is a little speech from me, but this sort of uh the 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 minutes of, these meetings are never final depending on the action of the majority of this body. And that can happen years from now. We find out we left something out, or we added something in the wrong manner. We can go back and have a motion to approve, or I mean, a motion to amend. And so these minutes, and when we start getting that out there from an official standpoint, we want to be sure we point out to people, these are the minutes of April twenty-seventh meetings, subject to possible change in the future in case we made a mistake uh or left something out, etc. So I just want to point that out as we go forward. Any other discussion on this time, the couple of minutes? Not all in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. And the motion carries. Moving on to reports. Dr. Dan Dawkins. The position of our roads. Are they healthy?
Some more. Still have a few to try. Uh just the general update on the crews. Of course, the paving crew, we've been doing some search treatment work, Hill City area. Went back to hot mix workers supplier, started running again, so we're up on Blunt, Blunt Mountain right now, working on that road. Uh base crew, uh ditching, had some cross-streng cross put in, of course, doing some uh work for rain. And about wrap all that up. Just some projects we got going, things to know. Annie Lee Road. About got the binder down. They had to go away for an interstate project, but they're supposed to be back uh tomorrow Thursday. I hope it's tomorrow Thursday. It looked too good otherwise, but uh one day they'll have a fire basically. Uh Park Avenue, that's one we've been waiting on utilities for so long. They have finally committed to come in and finish their work uh seventeenth, eighteenth, or nineteenth, depending on weather. So our contractor, we've got him, and he can be back the next Monday or twenty-third, so. Another one, uh of course Trails End Road, we want to talk about last meeting. Uh contractor back out there working. That's why we had some slope failures and stuff, and I was out there with him for a while yesterday. He was, he had probably the majority of the stuff cut out when I was there on the slope. So they are proceeding on with that one. Item two is basically just for information purposes, but uh there's a letter of map provision. This is due to our, dealing with floodplain. Uh this is for Stowe Mall Branch, long portion of uh State Route one seventy-four, this is not vulnerable. I think we already approved this basically back earlier. But it uh finally ran the advertisement and everything, so it became effective at August twenty-fourth, and the thing that I sent the letter changes. Next item here, uh I've got a quote from Hewitt Concrete. And this is for concrete flowing in Sheriff's Building in Hill C. I think it's the alley behind Cogswell there. But uh the estimates are quote basically is twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Have a motion of a second, I think. Properly moved in second. Any discussion? On favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries for the twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
And the next thing I have, we have a vacant crew leader position. We've done interviews and stuff on that, so I'd like to recommend that uh Dwayne Hamilton be promoted to that position, effective starting next paper.
Per recommendation of the engineer, any kind of motion? Motion in second, do have uh any discussion? On favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries.
So on that point this morning?
On that, Annie Lee Road, they said when they're gonna, on the mix, when they're gonna try to do it?
I talked with him, uh I think it's Friday. The uh NCAT, they were still waiting on some kind of test they hadn't run yet, so we're probably, they're gonna be a week or something like that.
NCAT's daughter?
Yes, National Center for Asphalt Technology. So uh and like I said, that is, of course, the one that's trying to get some recycle work. But anyways, hopefully it's just like a week or so, they start back. It says outside chance, so you just keep going, but.
Just let me know when you do. I want to know what you do.
And and I I it's up to the commission if y'all want to, but um I'd like to have a little ribbon cutting this first time. We can just recycle it. We can sketch it. Can't sketch it. Anybody that wants, you can represent the commission, for instance, who's out there on the day, you can just take some sort of photograph that's uh in in this, the startup of this recycle process on a project that took a long time to get where it is, and it was a tragedy that cost it. So there's a lot of interest from people. Be happy to know that's being done, and it's being done the way it's done. So if y'all are so moved, be willing to.
Oh, since David's here, give us an update. I I get questions every time I have a meeting about uh Trails End. Give us an update on Trails End and the latest thing you've told us, if anything changed, change it.
First thing I ask them all.
The contractor is back working, and like I said, they they started on the area where the slope failure was coming. And uh they they had over half of it cut out yesterday on the top of them, so uh it is, it's moving along again. No more slowdowns, hopefully.
Okay, anybody else have a question for the engineer? Uh I've I've got a just a comment. I asked the uh engineer to provide an estimate of the work we're doing specifically because it's a, it's a process on a project that you can easily, I think this is going to this project. And that is the cleanup and fill-in and all of the of the uh shop building out of the arena. Uh and I think we've got a thing in here to ratify the spending of the five thousand dollars we're good there. Uh the other, though, is the estimated cost and and keep putting him on the spot with his figures because we all know that uh every time we use the county road department for something, it's not free. And uh to give an example, I've got a friend from Dunn Construction to give me his estimate of what I guessed was there. For instance, I guess there would be uh roughly a hundred hours of of work uh total, go for the tri-axle trucks, uh the amount amount of stone, amount of dirt, just things that I can come up with, the rest of that, rest of that's what I've gotten done. And uh putting all the figures together, uh I came up with twenty-three thousand. And, uh, putting all the figures together, uh, I came up with twenty-three thousand forward, and he was keeping up with it, when he found the whole of the ground, it was already up to about eighteen.
Yeah, yeah, we were, uh, we were up above twelve thousand, that pretty quick, and we had to put extra resources, so I, I would say we were probably at least twenty-four, because they're finishing up today. But, uh, we're, you know, probably not.
Reason that figures in Florida, uh, using the road department, we're using DOT funds that are generally s- put towards roads and equipment, et cetera, from the Department of Transportation. Y'all know I've kind of always advocated that we put, take money out of our general fund, and use it on these jobs, that if we'd have contracted it out, we would have taken it out of the general fund. And we would, uh, reimburse your funds, and I'm not advocating that today, just want us to know what the values and cost of that might be, if we ever decide as a commission to start pretty much officially, we didn't give you some sometimes, and sometimes you say, I'd like to transfer this amount, especially if it's a great deal. Uh, but on, on this particular one, uh, just to have the figures there, uh, when we ratify the five, my figures are twenty-three forward, you said around twenty-four, tell them. So we're gonna be pretty close, I'm gonna ask that figure to be put in there, but not necessarily that, that we approve to take that out of the general fund and give to, to Dan at this time, unless y'all want to, but we just know that that's the value of it, and it, it depends on how you measure it, I have people when they say something about that, uh, using the road department, other years, and then some people work for the road department, you're taking off of their job. Well, I don't know how much logic there is there, but if you take some, take them off of the job that I own, and you put them on another job, then you kind of get times two. You're, you're spending that kind of money on the job you put them on, and you're taking them away from a job that you could have had them. So it's, it's, it's one of those things that we need to continue to stay aware of, that your work is not free. And it really came to my mind when we was counting up how much we spent on some other projects, when we did the site prep, for a big job, for instance. Especially if you do it for somebody outside of our business, if you go do work for a, a municipality, we do the base for a building, and that's a cost. And we need to know the cost, and then you would decide whether to reimburse your funds out of that cost. That way we have a true tracking of our budget, then, of the road department. So that's what all that'll be about, uh, whenever we get to that part of the agenda, is to ratify the spending of actual money and the estimated cost in there, so it can be documented. And I thank you for keeping up, you know, that's a little bit extra too. I'm surprised that Gavin Dunn came out pretty close with what your figure would be. Y'all got some kind of cheap book y'all use or something?
I don't know.
So you're gonna have to gather up. But that's a good thing. Uh, any question, any more questions for Dan? Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, now, moving on in our agenda to our county administrators, you can see Tina Morgan is not here, she's, uh, her husband had a simple procedure with the doctor today, she wanted to be with him, to make sure that he came home, and her attitude that he, that he left with. So, uh, so she, she'll be back tomorrow to give us a report on whether or not his attitude's better. We will find out. And, uh, probably no, because of her ba- attitude's bad, and it's, and his attitude went better, so we'll find out. But we do have Corey here taking minutes, and I thought we was gonna have, uh, uh, Suzie, is she just doing it from the back row?
Yeah, back row, that's just. We see it in church.
That's where most of the money comes from. Yeah, that's the time, she said on the back.
Tina told me to take notes and make sure that you behave.
Ah, ha, uh-oh, okay, all right. Me, me and Suzie, before I go to the administrative report, me and Suzie have been trading, uh, and, and I'll take this opportunity to apologize for my attitude sometimes in the work session, I apologize each and every commissioner for one thing. And, uh, uh, and, and I've always had a debate, I used to have it with my daddy, but my daddy was real serious about this, he was a Baptist preacher. And he preached about, uh, sins that are listed in the Bible. And s- things sometimes we think are sins that might not really be, for instance, it's a sin to be angry. So I sin pretty regularly, I just wouldn't say, it's, it's, it's probably one of my big sins, maybe some of y'all's small sins, but I, I sin pretty regularly. But it is one of those sins that is measured by another attitude on the other side of the same coin. One side of the coin is you're angry, you're bitter, get away from that, and I think, uh, some, some staff member sent me something, I don't know, what book was it?
Ephesians.
Ephesians, yeah, the Halls Letter to the Ephesians, and it talked about that. And so I sent a little letter back about righteous indignation, but also those are, those are things that you can forgive, those are, yes, you have that sin. But if you have a righteous indignation to get something, and you don't speak out, that's getting pretty close to a sin itself. So, but is your righteous indignation justified? So I just want to say, sometimes my righteous indignation is not justified, and I apologize for that part of it for sure, and I've already asked God to forgive me, so it's not a whole lot y'all do either. Having said that, I, you got a lot of shoes to fill to follow that up, so administrators report.
I don't have anything, everything that Tina.
That just shuts you down, didn't it?
Um, everything that she had from the work session is in the new business.
Okay. She simplified for. I'm not sure I'm like that, I mean, she didn't have to make these, and give it a gun just as good as she did. Anybody got any questions for Assistant County Administrator? Like something really hard? I guess not. Moving on then to something more difficult, our county attorneys.
Thank you Chairman and Commissioner, I've only got one thing I'd ask for y'all to actually consider this morning, it's not on your agenda. And that is about three years ago, we entered into an agreement with a group called Pronto Track, which is the group that provides the monitoring services for your court, and specifically for your community corrections participants. An example of when this would be important is if we let somebody out on bond, and we want to know where they are, typically in relation to where other people might be. And so this gives us the ability to monitor and track those defendants, typically before they are sentenced, but it can come into play after they are sentenced. The way it works in reality is that the defendant or the participant pays for the service, we provide this service for both adults and juveniles. The county is involved because there is a requirement that somebody come in and basically guarantee payment if somebody doesn't. To my knowledge, we've never been asked to pay anything for this. This is a service that clearly bears on the safety and security of persons and property, making it an exception to the bid law. Although this is our sole source provider for this particular product, it might not need be. That being said, I think what you find from all of your judges, and from the court system, and from community corrections, is that this is an asset that makes our county a safer place. So all that being said, this agreement is simply renewing our existing agreement with Pronto Track's continued monitoring services, this is the ankle monitor.
There you go, I think we have a, a, a line out in new business. Did we have something on that to?
We, we did, but it, it was left in the news.
Okay, all right, do you need a motion, though? Have a motion out of second.
Motion.
Properly, that, properly moved in second, any discussion? Thank you, Dan, for explaining that, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
That's all I've got on my report, unless y'all have any other questions for me.
Questions from the commissioners? All right. Uh, moving on my report, uh, I've had some things, uh, to come up with, the sheriff's department, you'll see some of this on the agenda that kind of happened somewhere after the, uh, the work session. And when you get to that, I'd like to explain that during my report, the, uh, the little form we got from the, uh, construction company that's doing the remodeling on what will be the DEU building, uh, we're, we're expending all of the, the funds as they were bid, and the ten percent that we are allowed to spend without, we go over the ten percent, we, we need, make some, have to say some more things. Uh, but to stay within that, uh, the discussion with the commissioners was that we take, uh, uh, change order request number six, change order request number seven, and change order request number twelve. The sheriff has come back and asked that if we could, instead of twelve, to replace that with change order request number nine, which is to build a screen wall that basically blocks off, I think, the plumbing and the water heater and all that in the back of that kitchen. Uh, and it would fall in there, did we get a report back that he would accept that? We asked, Suzie, did you get that?
Yes.
So we do, we can, you, use that in exception to the ones the commission discussed in the work session, which was change order number twelve, replace number twelve and take number nine instead. Y'all okay with that? If y'all, if y'all are good with that.
I have, the sheriff didn't come back with that.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't hear back from him.
He didn't come back, no.
Uh, the letter that I got, I got, uh, email from the sheriff.
From, from the question to, to clarify, nine or twelve?
Yeah. I mean, he was, the sheriff was requesting.
I didn't see that. But we asked him.
I bet you it was within two hundred dollars or something like that of the ten percent. I don't know how crazy that'd get.
Well, we need, I thought we were gonna ask them to do whatever this work was for eight thousand.
Eight thousand, that's what I.
I think eight thousand keeps us within the ten percent.
Okay, so what we could do then is, uh,
authorize up to eight thousand.
authorize up to eight thousand dollars to be spent on the change order request.
And that's how the email was directed.
Okay, and she's still in the, uh, uh, it's, still the report phase, we can actually take action now, so every time motion down, I'll approve up to eight thousand dollars for this change order request on the DEU bill. And it'll be those items that you talked about before, but more than likely, build a spring wall instead of the electrical upgrades. One that's a little cheaper than the other. And paint floors in the safe room, and the former kitchen, and paint the walls in the safe room and former kitchen, and I've talked to Roddy about some things in the future that they can actually do in house. So to have a motion to approve the request, the sheriff put those up. Motion second, properly moved in second, any discussion on those? I gotta make it, make it up. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, we'll mark that off. Number twelve, number twelve on your agenda then. Okay, all right, moving on to Mr. Brown, District one.
Uh, gentleman contacted me yesterday, or the day before yesterday, asked, uh, and about the jail, and Roddy and, um, Jay, I think, giving him and his partner two, or, that said they'd be back with us. I think he said he sent you an email or was going.
Call me and sent it, yeah, and he's, uh, he's very interested in it, of course, we had decided as a commission on a value, that's what we're going to change.
I told him the ballpark, like you said.
Okay, yeah, I told him my ballpark was from five dollars to five million. Get a little range. But yeah, we've got a, we've got a settlement on the land, is that right, James, as a commission or what do we do?
Not necessarily, we have to make sure whatever we do in order to res- to transfer our asset to, for a different asset, that we get adequate consideration for it. So there's about various different ways you can do that, you can have an appraisal. And that was. Ask for the appraisal. You can hold an auction, uh, you can hold a, essentially, you can accept bids for purchase. Uh, so there's a variety of ways, whatever process y'all want to use, but that process has to be one that we can say will give us adequate consideration for our, for our asset.
So that, does that mean we probably need to establish an adequate consideration amount that we take, or, or just whenever we get one, that we'll decide whether that one's adequate?
Well, what I would suggest is either you accept, that you, you establish a, a minimum amount, or you establish a process that will allow the market to bear out a minimum.
I'd like for us to.
Or you can do both.
Because the, the, allowing the market is gonna be difficult on the old jail and the block, the block will be a lot easier.
Sure, but if you wanted to establish like a reserve, you could.
Yeah, like if you had an option, you were gonna pay less than this, there's a, that.
I see the round, I'm like.
I think that, yeah, I think that'd be good, and if we'll decide in the end, we can do that, hopefully by the next meeting, decide on that, and he's ready, then if it's acceptable, he'll probably make an offer. That we have to then go out to other people and let other people off.
I think, yeah, I'm thinking, we just established the number, and then that would be yes.
Okay, so that would be no problem, it's just that we don't have the following, uh, or disposal, just like we would, uh, uh, what's our, I'm sorry. Get that clear on that? Okay. So, okay, that, that, that's, that's a good process, let me see, thank you, gentlemen. District two.
Danny's already talked about that.
All right, District three.
The only thing I got, Mr. Chairman, is I've had some people today as well as in the past, ask me why we're not allowing our meetings to be videoed. Like you have put on Facebook that we're not allowing them to be videoed.
Yeah.
I've looked at that channel for two years. So it is being videoed.
Yeah, but I.
I would ask you to correct what you put on Facebook.
Uh, and I'd ask you to read it, that's not what I said, I read it.
I read it, I read it right now.
Okay, read it, it's, it's posted on there about three times, and it's posted that it allowed, that I asked for the commission to allow it to be videoed and posted to the Facebook page.
You put it here. You put it here.
Okay.
But I, I think we're gonna work out.
I'll, I'll clear.
I make the motion today on that.
I don't have a problem clearing it up, but my thoughts are, it's being videoed now, uh, in fact, it is here most of the time, that's okay, we don't mind. Because we're getting the video, it's so cheap. And, uh, my, my point was to also be careful to be legal, so not ready to jump off into the illegal portion of it. That is not our video that, that is the re- the record of the commission, this is official record right here. And that one can be paused, or whatever is, it can't, it, it becomes the, the official record, it's got some things it's gotta go by, I understand that, that staff has mentioned that, I've talked to this staff about that. But we even pause this, for instance, she's not writing down all the words, man, you just said. That, that's the way, that's the way we do it, these are the minutes. We record the words, so we can go back for clarity's sake. So there's already some pausing, and this is not something we're coming up with, people have already crossed this bridge years ago in other counties, some of them in Alabama, so it's not something we gotta reinvent the wheel on. Uh, so we'll, we'll move on with that, but I will, I will go back and reread whatever I posted on my Facebook page, because I'll, uh, I'll be putting video in it now, it's got microphones out, and things are so simple.
Well, people have been to the meetings that have seen the video, and they're saying, last time I was there, y'all were videoing, why don't y'all do it now? And I tell them we are, and they said, well, you can't say that you're not.
I agree. I agree, but I'll re- go back and read it, because that's.
And that's the problem I've got with it.
Yeah.
You just told a story, I mean, you told your own story there.
Well, uh, when we get through this meeting, if y'all hold on before we get to a journey at the end, we'll go to recess and we'll pull up my Facebook page on my camera.
I've had it sent to me several times.
And if I, if I posted on there something wrong, I know this, I had over a hundred entries on one post. I had to block it off and repost it, uh, what you can do is you can put a like on it, and you can re-share it again, and the number starts getting smaller, until you kind of wear it out, otherwise they overwhelm one of you, you can't already read all the posts. I didn't have anybody tell me they didn't want to post it, and, and the comment was made, the reason I did it, the comment was made, uh, that I was making up people that were interested in this, like I was coming up with this idea. That's not true, I had this said to me a lot, that first of all, here to get fame, and then later on, as, as the chairman, why don't y'all, several comments have been made along that line. Why don't we have meetings after hours, six o'clock, seven o'clock, at least one time a month? Uh, well, I'm not in favor of that part of it, on the video or whatever, I'm, I'm in favor of having the meeting, our business meeting during business hours, because we have access to the staff and the records. If we had a meeting at six or seven o'clock at night, we'd have to call people either back in, or be here during time later, so we could have access. Because sometimes we have to stop and get our, in fact, when she says something, there's something lost, Suzie will run out of here and go get something we might need. And if we did that night, uh, or even in a different location, some of them, I mean, had people say, why can't y'all have, roll these around, have them at the city hall, different city hall once a month, there's all kind of ideas. Well, in today's world, most people video it and put it on a, a website. They put it on social media, my position is to put it on social media also, but with a little recess in a little while, I'll pull it up and read it, and, and I, and if I've said that, that's not what I meant, uh, we'll.
That's the problem with it.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the problem with it, you say it, and then we got to address it.
Well, but if we were putting it on a, a official website page, you could comment then, you could say that, that's not what we said, and you can copy and paste and put it right out there and correct.
I have no problem putting it on our website.
Yeah, the website, the social media site.
Social media, I'm not on there, but I don't say what I think about it.
Well, if you're not on there in today's world, you get this kind of discussion, you get a discussion that people said that are on there, and they saw something that you didn't even see. And they tell you they saw it, but you don't even have it, so, you know, we gotta go back and make sure that we all see what we said.
The people thought of me wrong, but they didn't want to post on your Facebook page that you said something wrong.
I'm glad they're right.
I understand that, but you did, you said something wrong.
Yeah, okay, we'll pull it up and read it, because if I did that, I didn't mean it, because my, and I, the, the motion, I was real careful yesterday that I could make the motion in a little while, the way that I meant for it to be, and that will be official recorded, on a recording, out on minutes. The, the motion that I would request will, it says that we film our meetings, video film slash our meetings, we post them on our county website, and any county-sponsored social media sites. We don't have, but we don't have a county-sponsored social media site, so that's a good question. The next thing that would come to vote, the commission is, if you want one, we gotta create one, we don't have one right now, we do have a county website. Of which, you know, and they're, they're working hard, we may need somebody to update it more than that, we don't have, uh, I think like three or four months worth of minutes were approved, all of them one day. That's why we have to catch them up. And it's so easy, if you get the right process, today we approved August twenty seventh. When we leave out of here, they've been voted on, and those minutes can be posted, they're official, they are subject to change, that's one of the fears I have, we need to be sure. When we leave out of here, they've been voted on, and those minutes can be posted, they're official, they are subject to change, that's one of the fears I have, we need to ensure people know. They can be changed, they can be changed two years from now.
I just wonder how it's worked all these years.
Times change, it's worked all these years partially because David used to work for a newspaper that had five times the circulation this guy now, and he's working hard to keep that part of our media there.
David does a good job.
He does a great job, but only, only a certain number of people read it. I'm of the opinion that we need to put as much out as we have opportunity, in these days' world, that opportunity is websites and social media, and the printed press. Uh, you know, everywhere we could put word out of what we're doing here, we need to. And even when the paper did it, we used to think they made mistakes, we wish they hadn't wrote it that way, Mr. Charles Markham used to say, I wish I'd said that. Uh, because sometimes we will probably make it a little off, but, you know, but David does a great job, I wish we had, uh, I wish we had David's newspaper, uh, with a circulation of forty thousand. That would cover a pretty good part of the population, then word would get out.
Well, since we're still in District three, I'd like to make a motion if I could, please.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we get with I T and see if they can live stream our work session and commission meetings. The work session is where the work is done, and that's what the people need to see.
Right.
The commission meeting, we're just, we're voting on yes or no, on what was actually discussed in the work session. So I feel that we need to be sure that we put in front of the people what we're discussing in that work session. So I'll make a motion that we video, get I T to bring us some figures on what it would take to video off of our website, the county's website, live stream, work session, and commission meeting.
Okay, have a motion that we, uh, uh, get the equipment that we'll need, and we'll need a quote from y'all when we get to that point before we make it happen, cause we have to vote on the amount. Uh, we, uh, get the equipment that we need to, uh, video slash whatever we need to live stream, which is a different definition of that. To live stream our, both our work sessions and our commission meetings. Okay?
Second.
Have a second, probably move to second, any discussion on that? And did I state the motion properly?
I, I would like for it to be as professional as possible, I don't wanna look like a bunch of rednecks up here doing, not Jerry, not, no, I'm throwing nothing at you. I'm just recording what y'all are saying.
And we hadn't looked at, and we hadn't looked at yours to see how professional it is, we've just been storing it.
It's on my computer upstairs, anytime y'all wanna come and take a look at it.
It's been, it's been videoed for not long after I got here.
Well, it, it started being videoed the day you were sworn in.
Yeah, so we've been videoing, we got them in a box.
So, live stream is best, Matt.
I think so, live stream is what you said, it's, it's right out there, I like that better, no doubt. Yes, ma'am.
Chairman, may I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the City of Hill City, they have hired Jeff Thompson to be their public relations person.
Yes.
I'm telling you, they're doing it right. The mayor may have a post, and Jeff comes along behind him, and he may give more facts, correct, and I'm not saying the mayor's not giving correct information, but explaining it in a different way maybe the public needed to hear. But it is funnel, it's funnelled through just one person that information, so it's not a lot, you know, a lot of people, um, posting and giving information, because, as you know, E M A, our number one, um, thing is social media and public information. And I'm telling you, it is working unbelievably, even with the Royal Sausage Fire, it was funnelled through one person, one source of information.
Yeah, and that's what, that would be ideal for us to do, that person could either work for the county, to be a contract person, or we could do anywhere from a lower level of that to a higher level of that. That's up to us, that's up to us, how, do we wanna jump into it that big all at once, or do we wanna do this a little at a time, so that we're all a little used to what that means? Uh, for instance, Jeff can make comments on their page, and he can explain things, I don't think he does that without asking the city manager to make, uh, uh, or any individual counsel. That, that, that comment that goes on there now becomes official from the body, not the individual. So if a comment comes from the councilman in District three or whatever, then that shouldn't have been done, because the person now is defining what that one person did instead of the body. So I'm against parsing out what a particular person does, I want the body to take action on it, and the comments should be made on whatever the body has said.
But our current format doesn't allow for comments, right?
Uh, current format does not, it's just a website.
Right.
You know, if you go on your Facebook page and say how bad our website is.
Sure.
Around it or whatever.
We create a forum where we allow public comments on whatever the medium is, that becomes a public forum. So right now, we don't have that.
Right.
No, no comments there.
I believe it's a place on our website where they can send us a message.
That's true, they can do that.
So we, that, that takes place of that.
Yeah, that's a good point, we've got that mechanism for people.
I think there are individual emails on there, to us and staff.
They are.
So they can send you an email, then does that become public record? Only if the body received it, didn't it? The individual receives it, either one of y'all receives something, that's not the body that's receiving. So we would probably have to create something that is the chairman, the board commissioners, Mr. Chan, who come after the body.
If y'all got any figures, get them down in the line, I'll put any figures, yeah, on there.
They've worked on it.
We just started the research last week.
We looked at other counties and how they're doing it, and it's really gonna depend on how elaborate we wanna go, with how many, how many cameras, or how things need, wanna, want to look, who you wanna capture, sound, audio, video, all that.
Yeah, this, and, and some of y'all are aware of it, and some of you are not. That, and the little microphone levels, there's about my telephone that's been recorded since I got in the room. Uh, with the little antenna that's plugged in the side, that has like a five hour battery life, is recording and has been recorded since we walked in the room, it cost me twenty seven dollars.
Is that the one you sing on?
No, well, it, yeah, it doesn't have my singing, you got a point there.
Why is that?
It is, that's, that's the very thing I posted singing on, right there, yeah. And I bought these little microphones, of course, sometimes y'all see my videos when I'm hiking on a trail.
Yeah.
I can, uh, I can leave my camera set up over here, and I can walk by the camera, and I can talk, it sounds just like camera, other lights, you walk by the camera in the distance, you get there, it's about her, so, but it's, it's cheap. That, that will, supposedly that'll pick up thirty meters, yeah, I don't think it'll be that, thirty meters is a hundred, a hundred feet. Uh, I think it'd pick up more like thirty five, forty feet.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I can see all of y'all right here.
Right.
And, cause I go back and, and I, and I, I listen to like the first fifteen or twenty seconds of it, and I can hear every one of them, very plain.
Yeah. On your, on your margins? The problem we had in Spring, we'll have to do this, well, all of them have P L C D, uh, we're gonna have to start having people to come to the podium, bring a podium, that's why Spring was over to one side, so the vision from the camera doesn't block people. Uh, you come to their podium, that's in a specific spot, and you make comments from that podium, cause it's in their recording. I think P L C D set up that like a little, like a studio.
But I can, I can hear Dan very well.
Yeah.
I can hear our attorney very well.
Right. But a lot of our comments, especially, especially, uh, not ours, but, uh, when we have people there as a meeting, we wanna know who the person is, like them being viewed too. And I don't know what the legal thing is on that, if somebody comes to our meeting, gets a motive meeting, we can record that person in this meeting, it's not like a secret recording you do out here on the sidewalk, one person has to know. Well, if one person knows, it's got to be, unless it's a hidden microphone, you didn't know he had one.
Right, so just to make, clear what we're fixing to vote on, we're gonna vote on live stream our work session, our formal meeting.
That's right.
No more, no less, right now.
What you got, okay?
You're open.
Okay, we'll pull the gals, hit that.
Okay, sir. Okay, any others?
And on the record, man, I won't make one statement, I don't think, take a break, we're just playing, I got to memorize.
Okay.
I got to memorize and people read it, too.
Well, we'll.
But I never one time, I never one time refused that, it recorded, or had it put in public, never once.
Yeah.
Never would have been against it.
I had to.
I had, so I want that to be unclear.
It would have had.
I never once objected to that.
If, if it had have recorded then, then we would know that I've suggested more than one time that we recorded them and recorded them, and we put them on our website or Facebook page, especially live stream our meetings. We, y'all know that I'm in favor of that.
Yeah, a year ago last June, a year ago, a year ago last June, I wasn't in the meeting, I was in town, and you brought that young man in right here to do this.
I didn't bring, I never, I brought him in for, for a recommendation of what he could do, he asked him in.
Okay, good, so let's find out what's going.
Yeah, okay, he wanted to make a presentation, you can't commission, but you did.
And you did real well.
My same token, if it'd been live back then, they would have known, you could say, I'll put it on my Facebook page.
Yeah.
Uh, and if there's something y'all won't let, I won't put it on there.
It's my Facebook, it's my Facebook page.
I know, but I, but I, that, that would be wrong, that would be misleading the public, that's why I say we need to live stream it.
You're right.
Both the meetings and the work session.
This is a wonderful step that I totally applaud, because if I put it on my Facebook page, it's gonna say what I want it to say, it's my Facebook page.
But you're talking about us.
That's right, and that happens during the process of an election, and it happens after your election, I'm talking about.
Now, if you don't get on there, don't.
Well, I'm gonna get on there, though, I won't stop getting.
I don't have a problem with standing, dude, please just don't call high.
Well, I may.
Yeah, it is helping on me, and I'm telling y'all, I never said.
We can start, we can all stand the truth, and lie, we're, we're having to defend those. The, that's passive aggressive, uh, feature right there that, that I can stand, I can take that kind of criticism, and I can also show you where, uh, I can stand up to it, and it's already also been done about me. There, we've all said things that we were mistaken about, that comes off to the person who said it about as a lie. And those things have been said about me from individuals here, now I can either call them a lie, or I can say there have been things that are, that misunderstood and said about me, that happens all the time, that's why I like to get those things out in the work session.
Well, that'd be great, that would be on.
That'd be on blast, right, it's a lie or not, yeah.
I call for the vote.
I do too.
Okay.
I want it to be professional.
I'll call for the motion, uh, uh, they just stopped, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, no, motion here, here it is, thank you, Mr. President. Now, Christopher Miles, District four.
I just wanna say happy birthday to Tommy.
Happy birthday.
Birthday's sixty one today.
Sixty one.
Again.
I wish it was live today.
Well, I can sing, and it'll be on my Facebook page.
I also wanna take a time, how much I appreciate time, what you've been.
Thank you, I appreciate y'all.
You've helped me so much.
Yeah.
Y'all, y'all do.
I come over this thing, I know anything, I know more, I pull out, he's helping me.
This commer- this commission works for the benefit of this county, and I've seen it time in, time out, before Stan came on, and after Stan came on, all the discussion is for the benefit of the citizens of this county. And, uh, it's a great group of guys, they're all, they've got different personalities, they've got different professions that they're good at, and I appreciate each one, thank you.
I appreciate you, thank you. If we say a whole lot more, we're gonna have to get a run. That might be on my Facebook.
Very well.
That creates content, I might, might open me up a YouTube channel or something. Okay, thank, and thank y'all for your, your open comments during the meeting. Moving on to old business, we have one that we tabled on eight twenty seven forty four, that was the, uh, trade name Family Dollar, I think that's the one down near, uh, that name, down there, correct, down near Ricky's.
That's it.
Uh, so we tabled it two weeks, what's the action to take it off the table, and we did.
Motion.
Have a motion approved?
Approved.
Motion approved, now a second.
Second.
Probably move to second, any discussion? On paper say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion here, alright. Item number one. Consider awarding the bid for the canopies, uh, at the jail, that's, that's the new jail in P L C D, uh, to Jason Goodgame, he was the only person that sent a bid in, and we did send bids out to several other people, so, uh, the only person that sent a bid in was him. Fifteen, pardon?
That was the second.
Yeah, fifteen thousand four hundred and twenty seven dollars for those canopies, do I have a motion?
Oh, no.
Have a motion, have a second, probably move to second, any discussion? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion here. Okay, item number two, consider approval for the county to bid for the arena extension. This is.
Just approval for the bid to be.
Yes, this is, yeah, and, and we've got specs, well, we've got a drawing submitted, and we'll have, we're gonna get. Yeah, okay, we've got drawings, and, uh, that's, the specs either in there, or we've been taken out of this, we'll have to draw up specs, so we'll ask the staff that takes care of specs. The specs will come off of this for those, and then we'll send those specs out to all the contractors that's on our list, uh, and see if we can get bids on them, that's a roughly a, well, it is a fifty foot extension on the open air arena, out at the, uh, the, the county's property on the arena drive. Uh, so I have a motion and a second, and did we vote yes, I think we all approved it, okay.
No.
Y'all any questions?
Motion, second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion here. Item three, consider ratifying a purchase order to disassemble the welding shop at the arena property in the amount of five thousand dollars to Ryan Smith. Uh, to disassemble the welding shop and to relocate on the arena property as approved in the August thirteenth meeting. Do we have a motion to ratify the purchase?
Motion.
Have a second.
Right.
Probably move to second, I'm going to ask you to amend the motion and add the cost from the county, uh, uh, plus or minus twenty four thou- twenty three thousand four hundred dollars as given to me as an estimate, Dan's estimate was around twenty four thousand. As the total cost of, uh, taking down and cleaning up the site where that building was, so do I have a motion to amend it? Don't have a motion to amend it to share with the citizens what the amount was totally to take down that building, or do I have a motion?
I'm waiting on discussion.
Okay, discuss it, do we have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Probably move to second, now, discussion.
I wanna tell Dan I appreciate you doing, just, and how that you brought those numbers up, it really comes to format upfront, how much you cost, all that price, probably close, that's just a number, probably four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, we've got a lot of.
Pretty close to a half a million, so, it is expensive, I agree.
We got, when I was looking at the day, we had, for this year, we had two hundred and twenty thousand, I think that's what we would spend.
The road department has that invested in, but, but that's before you did the road behind the building and all that.
Yeah, I mean, the, you know, we did the, uh, path for the building out there last year, so, I mean, we'd have to add that stuff in also, to, to full, to.
That's a good point.
And, and all of, you said what I'm gonna say, but all, all of it's progress, I mean.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
It's, it's movements in the right direction.
So I don't have a problem with it, any other discussion?
I'm just going up there and just try it, that's right. Any other discussion?
Well, with the second part of this is to disassemble the welding shop and reassemble it on another portion of the property.
Right.
Uh, I don't know if we can leave that out, maybe some help here, I don't know if we can leave that out or not, but we may look at it and put a new building back there instead of reassembling the old building, and say, possibly sell the old building. Uh, we got some people, as I understand it, might wanna buy the old building, uh, uh, you know, it, somehow have to determine whether or not, we can do that later, we can vote on that later in the second one, before we assemble, I'm sorry, I just really brought that up.
Any other discussion? Well, I have some discussion, there isn't, there's not the building there anymore, a significant amount of the building is not even, not even there anymore, it's gone, it's in the, it's in, it's in the dump, part of it's piled up out there. There's basically some metal, uh, part of it was siding, part of it was roofing, uh, there's metal, and there's trusses, and then there's some, there's a pile of, uh, lumber, part of it broken, and it's just put over to one side. Uh, and if, if you feel free to go out there and drive out there and look at it, and I did, and I took pictures of it, there's the metal and the trusses. The trusses look like to be the same ones you buy online, there's, if you go to marketplace and type in trusses, and you'll get a lot of people selling old chicken house trusses, and that's probably what that was, cause it's, they're real concrete. Uh, so we've got those trusses, part of them are broken, uh, part of them are sold off in places that they'll have to have some, amends made, so, my, my thoughts are, just in a way of discussion, uh, I don't think we have enough out there to use for reassembly. But that's what our motion was, our motion was to disassemble it, which wasn't something I even agreed to then, I disagreed with it then. Uh, and our motion was to reassemble it, of which we don't have anything to reassemble. So I'm in favor of getting rid of that whatever way, uh, offer it for somebody to buy would be fine, because at this point in time, we don't have enough building to build him a shop out of, so I'd rather buy, I'd rather us revisit that whole thing.
Let's do that in the, in the work session.
Yeah.
And, uh.
Well, right here, we got a, uh, got this on the agenda that we've approved, consider ratifying the purchase of the five thousand dollars, if you'll remember the five thousand dollars, the discussion was, and we're talking about that, but the discussion was that the building would be disassembled, and somebody mentioned during discussion that it would be disassembled by inmate labor. Far as I know, I've been out there several times during this process, there was never. Far as I know, I've been out there several times during this process, there was never any inmate labor there. It was disassembled by a contractor that was chosen, I guess by Ashley, but there was a contractor chosen for five thousand dollars that was never discussed in the motion to disassemble it. This is to ratify the five thousand dollars. Yep.
It's the same thing we do if you sign a paperwork.
That's right.
And we had an authority.
That's right.
Then we turn around.
So we're ratifying the five thousand dollars, but the motion was also to disassemble the welding shop, so I think we probably need to ratify the motion with this amendment, that we're not going to reassemble.
It says relocate, relocate is different than reassemble.
I don't see reassemble.
In the motion.
I see relocate.
I see relocate.
It said.
It says relocate, no, it ain't reassemble.
The motion to disassemble it's in the old motion that didn't have the five thousand dollars in, that we're ratifying the expenditure of the money on. Came out the same motion.
Cause I understand.
To disassemble.
Yes.
Yeah. In the motion though, it was also to reassemble it on site and a site to be chosen for a shop out there.
And that made me.
That was in the old motion.
Right.
Is that, am I wrong there? Wasn't it in the old motion? We were gonna reassemble. We're gonna reassemble. Nothing was said about tearing up the concrete, nothing was said about taking a mower or whatever, taking all the grass out there, all, nothing was said about hauling tons, many tons, uh, of gravel out there and making a flat site out of that. Nothing was said in the motion to do that on a piece of property that belongs to the citizens.
We did say turn it into park, okay?
And here's, here's where.
Do it before the fair.
Yes. And y'all, we're, we're at odds and we're gonna be at odds probably quite a while, cause that's okay. And here's where we're at odds. The citizens do not know that we chose to spend twenty-eight thousand four hundred dollars to do something to that building, but denied a request for a purchase order for three thousand dollars to use it for air conditioning, not do, not spend any of that money. Not spend a penny of that money. Citizens don't know that all that was done in the background. Background that building's been taken down and cost twenty-eight thousand four hundred dollars, which is almost enough. Almost enough to pay for the request we had from two citizens at the work session to pave their little old road up here in Asheville for using that money. That's my righteous indignation. We are spending money, just like my little item number four says, on useless unnecessary construction projects. There was no need to tear the building down, there was no need to spend any of that, there was no need to engage Dan on that project to take away a building that didn't belong anywhere, it belonged to the citizens at the arena that had s- at, at, at least three ag instructors that were excited about having it for a place for them to use. There's no reason to do that, but we chose to, we chose to spend that money and we didn't choose to make it public. All I'm trying to do is make public what we chose to do. We chose to spend on that project. Somewhere between twenty-eight and thirty thousand dollars.
What I remember is we, we talked about putting Bob in charge.
I didn't.
And doing that bid. Using, using the inmate labor if possible.
That's, well, I didn't, I, I don't, I didn't talk about that, y'all did, y'all had a discussion.
We had it in the work session.
Yeah, you had it in the work session, but you didn't have, you didn't have a motion to put him in charge.
It may have been one of the meetings you missed.
But you can't take action out of the work session, I have just as much authority to say what we ought to do on it as y'all do and it was done in between meetings. It was done outside the view of the citizens.
Stan, you missed four meetings in a row, work sessions and where it went with a meeting.
Okay.
There's a lot of things discussed, but you were not there.
They were discussed, but there's no motion, I went back to look for action, like you gotta have a motion and a second.
Make a motion to take the building back.
But not spend any money and we're ratifying that.
We're not, we're taking.
If we made the motion, we're gonna do the other, then ratify that, pull up the minutes.
We're taking it right now.
Pull up the minutes that you're talking about, I missed four of them.
I can't put a vote, it's.
The motion is being called for, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries two. Ratify the purchase at five thousand dollars, disassemble the welding shop and relocate it on the arena property. Approved as approved, that ratifies that action.
Well, I would clarify for the minutes, it seems like we also added informational aspects related to the, to the monies that Dan spoke about.
Did we have a, but we did not have an amendment to the motion, I asked for one.
We did.
What, what was the amendment?
We did.
What's, alright, what's the amendment?
You said, Dad, you said it's down, down four hundred dollars.
Okay, so we added that too.
That's what, that's what you want.
And we had a vote, did we have a vote, motion and a second and a vote on the amendment, or is that what we called the motion on?
Well, we just talked, we just.
On the amendment, do the amendment first. That's the proper procedure here, all in favor of the amendment, if you don't say an aye.
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 Have two ayes?
Aye.
Or have three ayes, motion carries. Alright, that's the, that's the amendment.
Takes two ayes.
That's the one. Takes three ayes, takes two ayes to see unless you got the one in the board. That's, that's three ayes, which is the majority.
Although, I, I don't think this is rolling out like all of us is wanting it to. Uh, because that's gonna be parking, that didn't really have anything to do with the barn being tore down.
That's gonna be parking according to what motion, what, what has set up parking out there?
That's what we've worked on from day one.
We had, we had worked, well, me, there's no motion in the minutes either where to make that a parking spot.
Who told you to work on parking, Dan?
Well, I mean, the commission, I mean, I, I keep, I talked to several of y'all, know that at one time with all.
One at a time. We can't direct him or her.
Your dog had that parking, did it not?
Yes, on our landscape, the one that the landscape architect did, it was expanding that parking. So that was our goal was, overall property goal was to expand that parking all the way to the roadway, which includes the disas- is assembling that building, so that, that is something that I have been, I have spoken on. I know, but I freely, as you all, is the desire and the community's needs for more parking on the property.
Alright, we have that document, a drawing that we, and we voted, but if you go back to the motion, I read it more than one time. We agreed to accept that drawing and su- as a suggested method of expanding. We've already changed several things on it, we'll probably change some more, so it's kinda like subdivision relationships, you don't go by all of them, you jeopardize all of them.
That's right.
And so that's what's happened here, we jeopardized that document by making changes in it already.
Right. We have, we have vanished from way outside of what we told the public we were gonna talk about it as it relates to this particular item. I understand the motion is to ratify the five thousand dollars that the minutes reflect that Dan's crew in time, effort, whatever, spent the value of approximately another twenty-four thousand dollars to, to complete that disassembly project as we approved in the prior meeting. Is that everyone's?
And I would like to add that, create a parking spot.
Okay.
Can we break that in?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Create a parking area.
Parking area, what were you on, comment?
Yes, sir. Okay. Uh, have another amendment, do I have a second?
What amendment, man?
We're, we're.
To add parking.
Official action to add that as a parking area.
To add parking.
Right. Yep.
I don't know how long we gotta beat this dead horse.
I don't know that.
Clarify the money.
I make a motion on that.
Amend the motion to add the parking and let's move.
There you go.
I second it, to add a.
Alright, all the favors that, to put on their add parking.
Somebody.
Okay, that's the last thing to hear about my father except on my Facebook page.
As long as it's true, I don't, hey, it's there, made up it.
Now we need to roll up.
My Facebook page. It will continue to say as I understand it, not as you like.
Yeah.
Now, what did you guys run a motion?
Alright.
Dave, could you quote that in the papers, make sure when people believe it, just that's what he said.
As long as I've been in this business, as long as I've been in business, this on camera, I have no problem backing up whatever I've said, sometimes it's good, sometimes.
You don't mind telling a lie.
I do not mind telling a lie, I'll put it up in the corner and you told a lie, you're prepared.
Come on, let's move on, we beat this.
You gotta amend the, you gotta amend the motion.
I'm not the one that keeps bringing it up, I'm beginning to lie, I get to respond. This is a.
Go to number four.
I thought we're gonna vote.
I have the ticket.
We have to vote on number three.
Okay.
Uh, we don't, I thought we.
We got two amendments on, we have, we got two amendments, have an motion on, we have the, the original motion that has been amended. Would the clerk read the motion that has been amended? Sorry, put you on the spot.
Oh, it's okay.
Okay.
So we are going to, on number three, on the E-business, we're going to ratify the purchase. Five thousand dollars to Ryan Smith to disassemble the welding shop on the arena property. And, um, to add the cost to the road department for twenty-three thousand four hundred on the sidewalk and to, and now that, that's done, it's gonna be parking.
Add the part of it, you're there in your dentist's parking, okay? You heard the motion, all favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. Yeah, it, it'd be better, it'd be better if I had to do it this way and I could just do it more lax. But I'm not gonna do it lax, you're gonna do it by the numbers as long as I'm here, we'll sit at least two more years and hopefully four more. And hopefully y'all get out and let people know why you're not in favor of me for years. And I'll get on my Facebook page and tell them why I think they should be, that's the way this works. I am, well, that's called passive aggression.
We're a team, Stan.
We're only a team when y'all suggest we're a team.
We're, we're a team until you quit being quarterback.
Uh, no, we're a team as long as y'all play your position. You can't be the appointed quarterback on your own appointment, you can't call Ashley and say, get me a purchase order for five thousand dollars.
If this would have been you doing this instead of Bob, we'd be having this conversation.
Yes, because three weeks before I was denied three thousand dollar purchase order under the same principle.
See, the Bob, the Bob was moving on to the next play.
Well, it's good to move on, so it's not anymore within there. Go, go. Stop, stop challenging me and I'll stop reviewing, okay? Just, just stop.
If I think you need to be challenged, I'm on that challenge.
And I'm gonna come back and put it on my Facebook page and on the camera and tell you why I think you're wrong, it's gonna happen that way all the way till we die. That's what I am.
Hopefully some people will see.
Here's, I hope they do, cause here's my righteous indignation, y'all have spent almost thirty thousand dollars on a project you did not have to spend and you've turned down projects already and you've taken two more out of the budget that two elected officials would like to have some remodel done, that this figure right here would have fixed. There was no reason, it was unnecessary, as I said more than one time, to tear down a little bit. It's unnecessary, we hadn't built the stables yet either. Would be, it'd been better off to build the stables first or put the parking out front first and we've added parking for five hundred cars in back. I don't know, we'll never know now because the little building's gone. I'm through, unless somebody wants to rebut that comment.
Are you done, can we move on?
We can move on, alright, thank you. Number four, consider request of Philip Bernard, jail administrator, to pay an invoice, uh, to provision without a purchase order, now seventy-four dollars, I know we didn't have a motion.
Somebody.
A second, properly moved in second, any discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carried. Number five, consider adopting resolution twenty-two forty-sixty-three for county fair expenses, as worked over with our county attorney. He's come up with some legitimate ways, you know, legal ways in his opinion, that we could spend the money, uh, the fair expenses, so. I didn't have a motion to adopt resolution twenty-four.
Well, I don't know what, what it is. It's got expenses for, of course, the, uh, rides which you already approved for engaging musical entertainment to the, to the four musical entertainers that we've, uh, engaged. You've got photography, you've got marketing. Those four sections in total, uh, will come to roughly five thousand dollars.
Okay, that, okay, that's the one where we're gonna use the.
Not count the ten thousand.
Correct.
We're gonna use, we're gonna use the five thousand grant money, it's still in there to be used.
It's less than ten thousand.
Yeah.
It's less than ten thousand, this resolution represents less than ten thousand and ex- that's excluding the fare, the rides.
Yeah, the rides are already paid, ten thousand.
Correct, this is, this is approximately ten thousand.
Yeah.
Well, Dan's done a lot of work out there getting ready for the fair, we need to include his money in that as well, because it's costless.
I think so.
How much would that be?
Oh, we can figure it out pretty quick, but he didn't do it just for the fair, his is a capital project that will also be used for the rodeo. These are items specifically for this fair.
I'm just saying.
And I'm just explaining.
Right, so.
Publicly explaining, probably.
I, I don't have any of that in here, but we can certainly go back and amend after the fact when he gets us that information. You know, the total for the whole year, for the whole since we started the pandemic.
Yeah, I love it, man. Yeah, that'd be good, but break it down if you can, cause part of it's gonna be for the fair. And, and this parking, part of that was fair, the twenty-four thousand, part of that was fair too. I mean, it, it's parking for road, fair and everything, so.
For the ventilation of the facility.
There you go.
Commissioner Barver, my math, my quick math is right, this comes to a total of seven thousand six hundred seventy additional dollars.
Before you get out of specific, it says in there the one hundred dollars per act extra, says, somebody put in there one hundred dollars per act and that's not what is discussed, it's one hundred dollars per person in that.
That's not in the resolution.
But, but one of the things we had, had an amount in it.
There may have been an email somewhere that had that, but the resolution that I drafted.
Cause the hundred dollars per act, yet we've got roughly a hundred dollars per person in the two acts that we already have booked.
We have four acts, total, uh, two thousand three hundred dollars total.
I just wanna be sure that that includes the hundred dollars, like there's one act of three people, we're paying them three hundred dollars.
Yes.
There's one act of five people, we're paying them a thousand, cause they're also furnishing their sound system.
Yes, sir.
There's another act of three people, that's a bluegrass group, that we just had in there, like the original discussion on email I have. Says we've given that whole three of one hundred dollars. The idea is we give them a hundred dollars per person that's in the group.
Yes, we did, this doesn't, this isn't the emails, this is, the resolution has one thousand dollars to the Ronnie Melton Trio, music and audio equipment. Three hundred dollars to the group Big Country, four hundred dollars to Renfro Mountain Medicine Show, six hundred dollars to Bluegrass Connection.
That catches them up then, to the number of people, yeah, okay, good, I hadn't seen that.
Alright.
Unless it's an email that I haven't read.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. That was, I just wanna be sure that we cover those acts instead of, we get through, we voted to give them a hundred dollars, we're ready to go. A hundred dollars, that's right, three thousand. Okay, Commissioner Reagan, with that explanation, clear expenses, now time a motion?
Motion.
Have a second, properly moved in second, any discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. Item six, consider adopting resolution twenty-four sixty-four agreement of the literacy, literacy council, central Alabama, in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars and that would be under some, uh, documents that's been provided by the county attorney that allows us to give money to the literacy council to represent us in literacy education.
Yes.
Let's prepare those, I have a trick.
Yes.
Okay, have a motion?
I, I'd like to make that motion, I used to serve on the literacy council of central Alabama. That's a great group that does a lot for our county and this is the first I know of that they've asked for back in return. So I'd like to make that motion.
Have a motion, now a second.
Second.
Properly moved in second, any other discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. Item seven, we've already voted on. Item eight, consider a request from Teresa Cruz, ask the inmate director to adopt resolution twenty-four sixty-six for the NIMs management system, uh, thing we do every year, have a motion to adopt that.
Motion.
Second, properly moved in second, any discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. Item nine, consider request of trade name Petrol, Petro World Package for approval of license, lounge retail. Uh, Kush Acquisitions LLC located at two one four two six US Highway two thirty-one, Suite one hundred Raglan, Alabama, is that that little place there in Cold City?
I didn't know that address, though, it's me.
It's Highway two thirty-one.
It's not be taken.
No, I've tabled it before, it, this is.
No, this is.
This is a different.
This is a different.
This is a table, I've, this is a table.
Okay, have a motion?
I have a motion, that's right. I got a motion here.
Second.
Properly moved in second, no discussion on table, motion, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Probably move in second, no discussion on table of motion, all favors say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. All right. Item ten, consider posting a call work session to review and discuss FY twenty-five budget to follow the nine-eight M subdivision plan work session on Thursday, September the nineteenth. We talked about that, I think, work session, that's the most, have a motion, that was second.
Second.
Probably move in second, any discussion? All favors say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Item eleven, consider posting a nine-one-one meeting to approve the FY twenty-five contract before the nine-eight M regular commission meeting on Tuesday, September the twenty-fourth, Aslan. That's in order for what we need to do there. Have a motion to do that?
So, move.
Have a second, probably move in second, to have a nine-one-one uh meeting to approve these contracts. Have any discussion? All favors say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Item twelve, we've already done item twelve. That's the agreement to uh let Chase do those three items uh under change orders. Item thirteen, consider request from Ken Crowe, revenue commissioner, to approve the go-day annual domain fees to be purchased, uh renewed with the county credit card. That was discussed in the work session also in the amount of ninety dollars. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second, probably move in second, any discussion? All favors say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Item fourteen, consider a half-page ad for the twenty-twenty-four Veterans Salute in the Discover St. Clair magazine in the amount of five hundred dollars as we did last year. And I think, did she send a copy of all of it? I saw a copy last year of that. Do I have a motion to do that? Have a second, probably move in second, any discussion? All favors say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Item fifteen, consider transferring a color laser, Laser Pro, et cetera, from the commission office to uh HR and payroll, from HR and payroll to technology, right? That's just moving that down the hall, isn't it? Okay, you don't take most of the approval? Most, have a second, probably move in second, any discussion? All favors say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Item sixteen, consider authorizing the filming of county commission meetings and authorizing the video recording to be placed onto the official county website and any official county social media site.
We don't have any social media.
Do I have a, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion for, so we can discuss? Have a motion, have a second, probably move in second. Now, discussion?
I'm not for the social media part of it.
And at this, yeah, at this time, I would also join in. We, we all know, we do not have a social media site this time. That's something we would have to discuss later. We do have a website. So, all the acts that this would do right now is put it on, if family can make it available for our website, if we put it on social media, if and when we ever have social media, that's approved by this county commission.
But when we do live feed, it'll stay on social media, it'll stay on our website, is that correct?
If we want.
They go back and review it at any time.
If we want it to.
It depends on the solution. I mean, most of, most, everything, every, every other county or city that I've seen do it, they'll have it live, and then they'll have archived meetings as well.
Yeah, you gotta archive that you go to.
I think, I think we got that covered already.
So, we don't need a motion in a second, is what you're saying?
That's what we done have a motion in second to do live, but you need to be on our social media, it'll be on our website.
We just had it for those, that's what I'm saying, we're in discussion. We just had a motion in a second.
I had a motion earlier to do live.
On our official county media site, that's in this motion also. No, no, not gonna check up, cause that's where sometimes our minutes get thrown out. That's not what the written motion in the approved agenda says. Item sixteen, consider authorizing the filming, yada, 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 to be placed onto the county website and, and any official county social media site. That's all in one motion. If we, if and when we.
I, I make a recommendation of moving official.
Have a, I have a, have a motion to amend the, the.
I have a motion.
Have a motion to amend it to not allow it to be put on any social media, county social media site.
We don't have any.
Have a second?
Second.
Probably move in second that we amend the motion to not allow it on social, on any, that's what's worded, I have worded, on any official county social media site. So, we're saying we're not gonna, at this time, we're not gonna approve to put it on any future, any official.
We don't have social media.
So, I will now post it on my social media site. It's mine. So, I'll post it on there as I choose to.
You can edit.
I can edit it. I can make it sound like I want to, or you can have an official website.
Here's my question. I don't know the answer to this. Are you saying you're gonna take the county's?
No, sir. I will be bringing my camera.
Let me ask, let me, you're saying you're gonna take the county's official live stream recording, or you're gonna bring your cam?
I'm gonna bring my camera, as I started to say, and I'm going to record like anybody else is allowed to by law.
Sure.
And I will post it on my website. It has nothing to do with the county's website or social media platform.
Or this motion.
But if we have, if we have official recording, which we've got a county employee right now doing it on his clock, that's an official recording. If we voted three to two to have an official social media site, we would develop one.
Can we do that?
This motion would put that on there then. Otherwise, we'll come back if we develop one. So, we'll have, we'll get to talk about it again. Otherwise, I can do what I said I'm gonna do. I'd rather it be on our official website, so people can see what's here that we all said yes. Otherwise, I'm gonna put it on mine.
We put it on our official website.
I mean, I'm sorry, official, official media site, social media, if we ever have one.
We don't have one yet.
We're gonna have to create one.
That's what we're saying, that's why you can't have it.
We have, we have a motion to amend it to take that off. We're in discussion. I'm discussing.
All right, discussion.
Okay.
What does this do different than it being live streamed and then left on our website for people to go back and review? What is?
Not much. We didn't, we don't have any motion at all about live streaming yet. Where did we approve live stream?
In the district three commission report.
Okay, so we are going to live stream. And on the website. I am for it, totally for it. I just wanna be sure we've got a motion, so later on I can save it, okay?
We got a motion to.
Appreciate the correction. Okay, good.
Can, can I just make a slight recommendation?
Yeah.
So, amend, go forward with amendment to, to take out any official county social media sites, because that doesn't exist.
That's right.
So, and then vote on the amendment to, to uh post the meetings on the website, like you guys have already done, and just the district three uh meeting report. The county lawyer's already said that it has been done, that's correct.
Right.
And then in the event this body creates, or has a motion to create social media accounts, then we move forward with putting items on social media. If there's ever one. I think this makes this process cleaner and more, and, and um easier to understand, that people watching at home or, or whatever. It just makes it cleaner.
Right. I put that in there to be sure that the people that I'm videoing right now knows that there's commissioners that don't want that reg to put on a social media site. I put it in there specifically for that reason, and I asked for it to be put on the agenda, and we've amended it to take that off. So, now it's obvious that we got a motion and a second, and probably four to one, if I had a vote, I don't have a vote, uh, to not put it on a social media site. Not that we don't have one, to not put it on one.
Well, we don't have one. I have a problem with that.
Do I, do I, I entertain another amended motion then, that, that declares that we adopt, that we establish a social media site. Do I have a motion?
But then you've got to, then you've got to declare what social media sites you don't want.
Right, and then we're gonna amend this, right? My expectation is that our, before we do that, we're gonna want our IT people to.
We'll tell you why I'm gonna say that now. I've heard enough of this crap. Move on. We gonna, we gonna, we discuss this in a work session. Enough's enough about this crap. I mean, I'm sitting here listening to this, this, to y'all arguing back and forth over crap, don't even need to be arguing. You're not gonna bully me out of this, cause it's just ridiculous. It looks ridiculous to you because it's really bothering what we're trying to do here.
You want us to say we're against social media?
Yes, sir. Cause you are.
We're not against social.
You're against putting our county meeting on social media.
We don't have a social media site, so move on.
I'm not gonna lie about that. I'm gonna say the county commission does not have a social media site, because we have an amendment that says, even if we had one, we put, we're not gonna put this on there. We're not gonna put it on there, cause we don't have one. Yeah, I know.
I make a motion, we table this.
Ah, there we go. We can table it. I think, I think. Have a motion from Commissioner Bowers to table it. Do we have a second?
Second.
Probably move in second, no discussion on the table of motion, all in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Thank you. Okay, item seventeen, I knew this would be difficult. This is hard.
It's not hard.
It's not hard. You was making it hard.
I'm gonna make it hard as long as y'all go out there and you tell her to take five thousand dollars and put it against the.
Who put it on social media?
I put it on social, and I'll put it on again. Well, we're gonna pull it up in a minute to see. You don't have to, you know what, you know, let me just go ahead and give y'all another little information. When y'all get so frustrated with what I'm doing, at least three of you can leave. The motion, the, the meeting's automatically adjourned, because we don't have a quorum anymore. And that'll go on social media too. If you can't stand the heat, get out of the kitchen. You don't want these meetings on social media.
I apologize to public for having to go through this. I apologize too.
And I do too. Those of you that uh, that are seeing that this condition wants to hide things, that wants to not put things on social media that you would like to have more of. Not everybody goes to the website and comes.
I don't have a problem.
Good. We got a motion to table it, huh? We don't take any action. That's right, yeah. Consider approval to officially declare the entire piece of property at the, on Arena Drive as St. Clair County Agriculture Center. Have a motion. Do I have, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion? Item seventeen on the agenda fails for lack of a motion from the commission, and I will report on my social media site of what kind of support there is for declaring that facility our ag center, so I can apply for proper grants for agricultural reasons. That's my complaint. So, motion dies for lack of second, we will move on. You don't want that to be up. You don't want that to be up. Oh, yes, we have. I've talked about it. I, I can pull that up. We most certainly have. This is why it needs to be taped, is you're, you're telling that you don't wanna hear it.
It's gonna be live.
It, it, it's already been live streamed on my side.
Chairman, one thing I would say to that, before we rename it, I'd like to get an opinion from our grant writer to make sure that whatever we name, it doesn't jeopardize uh the funds that we've already invested. It does need to continue to carry this name in the center for.
That twenty-something acres, I've already checked with the grant writer.
Okay.
And the grant writer said that that pandemic center can be located on the ag property, just like a storm shelter can.
And I'm sure that it can, but I think it still has.
Well, we're sure, then why do we need to go back and ask?
Because I want us to be careful with two million dollars.
It's, it's more like four million dollars, and we're not careful already.
Oh, well, I'd like to start being careful. Four million dollars.
Cows out and marn, you know, horses out and marn, whatever those say it is. Uh, it, it, we're not being careless with it. What we're doing is we're, I, I've already tried to apply for a grant from the ag voice that was held. That were declared, like Blunt County, Colvin County, Etowah County, uh, Wilcox County, they've all got ag centers. We don't have one. And when they apply for money such as Blunt County, they apply for it in the name of the Buck County Ag Center. Some of them call it Blunt County Agribusiness Center, such as Colvin, I think.
I, I'm sure you're right, Chairman. My point, you're right. My point is I didn't know this was gonna be on the agenda, or I would have already done this for us today. I didn't recognize this was.
The copy of the agenda wasn't sent out?
It was, but I didn't get this particular item on.
Yeah.
After Thursday.
Well, I don't have a problem tabling it.
Well, I, I mean, I think it's failed for lack of motion.
I make a motion to table.
Ah, good. Have a motion to table it? Do I have a second?
Second.
Probably move in second to table it. No discussion on table of motion, all in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries to table item number seventeen. Now. Uh. Before I adjourn, I'll bring these up here in a few minutes before I ask to adjourn. Uh, consider public travel requests. Have a motion, have a second. Probably move in second, any discussion? All favors say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Item nineteen, board appointments. Do we have any? All right. We do have board appointments, so.
Call it, St. Clair County, uh, St. Clair County Department of Human Resources.
Do we have a recommendation?
Motion to reappoint. Pay it back and listen for ages.
We have a motion for the, to appoint uh, the two people that are already serving on there, uh, to reappoint them. Do I have a second? Probably move in second, any discussion? We have discussion, both of them have been contacted. No further discussion, all in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Any other board appointments? Official board appointments? All right. See none, moving on. Consider payment of the regular bills. Item twenty.
Motion.
Have a motion, have a second. Probably move in second to pay the bills, uh, understanding that you can stop payment of any bill on there until five o'clock today. Okay, uh, per our policy. And before we adjourn, I did meet with an architect, uh, had communication with the sheriff on the discussion we've had in the work session about building the sheriff, uh, uh, a new sheriff's facility in some shape, form, or fashion. It may or may not include dispatch, and all that had been worked out, we'll have a plan. But to start the plan, the sheriff contacted uh, an architectural firm, uh, that actually ends up being the guy that designed the St. Clair County Veterans, uh, Veterans Home. He worked for Williams Blackstock at that time, and that's who the sheriff contacted, and he's got some preliminary drawings. He said, these drawings will take off on the front sides and all that of the building are just, you know, they, they, they whatever you want to be. But inside, you might wanna look at a floor plan, cause the commission needs to have uh some input into this. For instance, first floor shows a place for a centralized dispatch call center. Uh, hopefully within it, it's also going to have room on that floor, depending on how big the building we decide, um, would have an area for training those people. Cause under our board position, not one board, under Aslan's uh guidance, we're required for those people, we contract to dispatch, we contract with them to be call takers. So, they have to be properly trained in that, so uh, we talked about having a place to train them. Right now, we train them in where Teresa's based. Uh, and this is just beginning. If you've got an architect that you want to uh get with the sheriff and.
Is that Ryan Jones?
No, this is Tim Lucy, who is the guy that drew the Veterans Home, and he worked for Williams Blackstock. And he's uh, he, he works with Bob Barnett, that's the official contact, but Bob Barnett is not an architect, he's a structural engineer. So, uh, so that's somebody he works with, and somebody the sheriff reached out to, somebody he knew, if you know as a commissioner, you know, we see him at all the con, the conferences. So, be sure you pull up the ones you have an interest in, that you got a relationship with. Make sure they get the sheriff to get a draw. Uh, with that, that's all I have. You don't have a motion to adjourn? Probably move in second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Have fun in court, James.
So, um, and I wrote on my budget negotiation, this is not been approved by the two groups, but that wasn't on my budget. I asked for a department header website under y'all. So, what information do you need from me? Now, the gentleman that called me about our website, he, he, yeah, he, um, went in and found all this information. Since we've already, we have a website, because it's so abruptly extended, and we cannot change anything. To change a feature. They just said they could give it to my, so I'll ask them how. Yes, similarly. I don't think I have any favorites for that. I forget all them. That's my donation. That's my donation.
Oh, you know, today I'm here to meet with two most, I think, about.
Wish we had a social. Okay, alright.
Enjoy it, y'all.
Yeah, I wanna talk to you. Oh, it's, it's so- Because, oh, it's, uh,
Okay, but I'm just saying, they're all looking at you closely. How are you? Need to see you.
Some of the discussion was-
Yeah, and they're not taking her. So we just, we're, we're just, well, more than good.
I mean, I get you, we're going to table it, you don't wanna make, you don't wanna-
Time, 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 we're just-
Okay, so, so there's two parts, one is to sort of answer questions for, for inhale, and the other is to look and see where, where the problem, the type of hot spots, or stuff like that. And so, uh,
We don't.
She, she got, I hear her today, and I've done that, so we're ready to do, I wanna make sure we take this to the inhale. If it has, uh, Which are avoided, and then these, like, in the center, which can, uh, it's, it's like, uh, I think that's just fine, how are you gonna do a breach of, just, the call. I got to pay for the years for no real raises, and we're scared, man. Like, allow them to do this, and we can just bring them, they can be handled, so. Guys, no stuff. No, let's try, alright, so, so think of a different way. I, I presented.
We just standing. This is hard.
Important, I think.
Oh, I mean, I guess, I guess, yes, applying everything before Thanksgiving, so we don't have it too many nights. We are, because, that senior boy, two boys, and, yes. They're really, they're, you know.
Are they gonna go together somewhere?
No. Oh, no.
I'm real, Joe.
Those ones got great common sense, but, no. Yes. Yes.
Yes, sir.
It takes a while.
When you do watch.
It does.
More houses, sale.
It does, but, it's exciting.
Yeah, that, that, I, I-
I'm worried, take this up here today. Take it over for her, so. She does, she, she does look like, with her eyes and what, yeah. Really? She's hot. Well, I mean. I can see it, she is, she has an age.
Thank you. You do. She's a great guest. They go right back.
So it's almost a full exact.
Yes, in November, and y'all are going to football.
Well, I mean, his own, this would be, in how, his own, yeah, we talked about it all the time. They say, you know, it's permanent, and we're talking about, and how, look at those problems in your world.
Yeah, I told you, yeah, I told you.
That's right.
I'm gonna enjoy the month of this year.
Hey, I've been hearing them Q C S Ks on football, you got one on offense and defense.
And they're hurting everybody. Yes. Yes, and they're getting tackled, and they're jumping back up, and they're beating, and they say- Yeah, they have to go with the training. They get the, the neatly, uh, neatly, uh, so, uh,
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, they come back looking nice.
That's why the roots are there.
Cupping, yeah.
They look like they're gonna take back.
They do. Yes, it is.
I love cupping, it really does hurt.
But if you promote the, the public cameras, cause the chairman there, I, I would be-
You too.
I got to see out for the last one.
Oh, did you? Oh, yes, we saw that.
It was, I'm so glad that she wanted to, I know, it was like-
I hope my thumbs, my own.
I was gonna be used, I know, she was like-
Hope my thumbs, my own.